Get a bigger room here. Maybe we can get a big, a room here like the third floor or the first, in the first floor.
But it's good to be able to see whether there's the option to do hybrids. I think Linda knows about what that entails.
Yeah, I mean, what Jeremy said is like the smaller boards and commissions meetings, they can get together sooner because it's not as many people congregated in one place. But they still need to be social distanced and all of that stuff.
Exactly. And we had a couple, I mean, how many? Probably two people from her vine would be. Yeah, we have, we had a couple of people in our meeting, so. At least, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, at least 10 people, at least. Yeah.
Yeah, and we have like the hybrid room up in the third floor conference room. And I'm working with IT on a similar model for council chambers.
Okay.
Good.
As I had a little chat with Shelley about that today, moving forward, we need to rethink this whole thing about how to still stay very transparent, very broadly, moving forward.
Yeah. Thank you, Lynn. I appreciate it.
Where is Jeffrey?
Do you need me to check in with him? I talked to him earlier.
Yeah, we saw him earlier, too.
Maybe he's just running a little late. Give him another minute or two?
Yeah. I'll send a reminder text.
Before we close the topic on what hybrids meetings are going to look like, which I know a lot of people are talking about, right? Not just us. So, you know, one of the things I've noticed is that through social media, we certainly have a larger reach and a larger audience. One of the misconceptions really has been, though, that that is an active way to participate in the meeting. You know, and, and it's not often that we can reply or answer questions, you know. So I think that'll be critical as we move forward and hopefully still can maintain the, the live streaming components because it has engaged people, but for them to understand there's still the way to submit formally your question, that kind of stuff. Hi, Jeff.
Hello.
So just keep that in, in thought.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
All right. So no Jahanee, we got strap, Melissa, tu, 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 tu. We are good to go. Who do we have scheduled to speak regarding lead abatement coalition?
Um, it's a number of people from the EPA, the CDC, and someone from the state.
All right. Does somebody want to take the lead and then go from there?
Mr. President, I'll take the lead, but I believe Frank will, will, will kick off the meeting first. So Frank, are you with us?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you very much. So, okay, well, in a few moments, our community development director is going to present an update on what the city's plan is for the abatement remediation of, of lead. Just some quick background before his presentation. The formulation of this plan started almost immediately after Mayor Eddie Moran was elected in November of 2019. At that time, the mayor put a transition team together and they identified lead exposure as a priority for his incoming administration. So in the executive summary of the transition report, it recommended creating an intergovernmental committee to address lead abatement and remediation of residential dwellings. So it was determined later by Jamal and his team that it was better to take a coalition-style approach in, to start this process off. And the quick timeline, what leads us to today is, and we have Bill on the call today, too, from Rawa. But in February 2020, Rawa hosted our first stakeholders meeting with all the stakeholders and strategy session with state officials. And it was, it was incredible way to kick off this whole process and bring a lot of the stakeholders in one room together. And since that meeting from Rawa, and Jamal could speak more of this, but the CD department has been engaging in this type of coalition type of meeting with stakeholders. So as you may have read in local media, most recently, the city participated in a virtual meeting with the organization Fight Crime Invest in Kids. And that was about meeting with law enforcement. So it was getting the, uh, getting the perspective of law enforcement. So simply put, in conclusion, a lot of these conversations of our colleagues now are beginning to shape into action. And certainly, the goal of the city is to eliminate the contaminants of lead that's causing our youth to have a health effect. So pretty much the background there. So I'm just going to turn it over now to Jamal for the remainder of the presentation. So thank you, Jamal.
Thank you, Frank. Appreciate that. And good evening, councilors. With us today, as you see some of the names in there, and I'm very privileged and proud to have, have them with us. We have two employees from the Agency of Toxic Substances and Disease Registry. We have Laura Warner and Deandra Harden. We also have Alex, are you with us? Alex Mendel, yes, here he is, Alex Mendel, and Anuel Watavi with the EPA Region Three. And we also have Dr. Marshall Ma, who is the Director of the Epidemiology Department for the, for the Pennsylvania Department of Health there. And on top of all of this, my good friend Bill Murray, who has actually championed the process in getting us all together in, in this coalition. So what I'm going to do is that I'm going to collapse my, my, my screen so that I can see the, the PowerPoint and be able to share it with you and be able to read the font on, on that one in there. So can you all see the PowerPoint here? Okay.
Yes.
So what we would like to start with and say that the Lead Hazard Reduction Action Plan actually started, as Frank indicated, earlier in the early 2020, we did submit a plan at that time to HUD. And we were actually very close to getting awarded, but unfortunately, we did not, we did not get it. We received about 70%. 70 points out of 100. And we were very close. So we requested a debriefing with the, with HUD, and we were told about where we fell short on this regard. So we have created an actual plan. And actually, Bill Murray, Alex Mendel, and Dennis Williams and myself got together and said, we are going to start this as of January 2021. And we are going to develop the program so that we will be able to have a very effective grant application and a very successful one. So why are we actually developing a plan in, in, at this time in there? The slide that you see before you here is actually given to us. And it shows that in the year 2019, almost four decades after the manufacturers of lead-based abatement being abandoned and, and, and completely prohibited, we still have high lead concentrations in children. In fact, Berks County scores or, or rated the third highest county within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And that is a very startling effect. And you will see some of the green counties in there. You see some of the orange, but definitely we are in the red zone in there. When you, when you hold in onto the city of Rattling itself, this is the city of Rattling, and the red shaded area is actually where we have received potential reports of anywhere between 600 to 3,000, potentially impacted children with lead poisoning. And you can see that it is actually all over the city itself. Please keep in mind that these samples were actually made on a, on a 19% blood screening itself. So when we get to the level, and as you will see later on, when we get to the level of 30%, probably this area will be defined more, and it could be actually more drastic than, than this, as, as we show in this right now. So why do we have that lead problem? What is in dreading that would have this? From the census reports and the, the data that we have in community development, basically, you will see that approximately about over 17,000 housing units were built in 1939 or earlier. And up to 1978, we have more than 83% of the properties there. These, these are houses that are painted with lead paint, and that is the main core for what we are, what we're facing in children or childhood lead-based poisoning itself. What makes the matter is more challenging, as a matter of fact, is that the next slide shows us, and this slide was based on data that we received in 2019, so it's a little bit inaccurate. But you will see that the ratio of rental occupied versus owner occupied, the rental occupied is higher than that. And when I say that, the reason why it is inaccurate, because I don't believe we do have at this point in time in 2021, 4,000 vacant units. So most likely, some of these units were converted to owner occupied or became rental occupied. So the ratio probably remains the same altogether. And as, as of this, it's like, what does lead poisoning mean to our children? For those families, parents who are actually watching and listening to us in there. Lead poisoning unfortunately develops in children of age of infancy to two years or 24 months itself. And that is the time when the brain is developing. A child at that time is very explosive. So as they crawl, as they walk, they, they feel things and they put things in their mouth. And unfortunately, that is how lead poisoning is introduced to the, to the infants or to the toddlers system itself. So it damages the brain, it damages the nervous system. It also, it actually also creates learning behavior and impulsiveness. The child's will start seeing a slow, a slow growth in the development and all aspects of it, including, including their IQ. It could also impair their, their speech and hearing impediment itself. For moms and dads who are watching us now, actually to, to learn about whether your child have lead poisoning or not, be careful about a loss of appetite. That is a very common thing itself in there. An upset stomach, that's, that's another reason. Self-flu-like symptoms, and that is a little bit challenging. This concerning the, the situation we're in right now with, with that, I'm going to say post-COVID, hopefully. And with also, it had, the child becomes less active than normal. All of these things lead us to a underperforming in schools and actually decrease in decreasing ability to retain the, the learning documents itself. And as a result of that, it could be a lower IQ altogether. So tonight, what we are presenting you is actually a potential hazard that children with lead poisoning, they are impaired when they're adulting to now. They are also, and being a child that is not doing very well in school or in class itself, the students of that kind will gravitate to, to, towards each other. And that could put them in, in, in less desirable situations, creating problems with, with the low. And as, as Frank indicated earlier, there was a program about Fight Crime and Invest in Children. That program is all, is all structured on this. And we are part of that program as well. So the staggering statistics that we have is actually, we, we mentioned that Berks County remains to be the third highest county within the Commonwealth for lead poisoning itself. There are about approximately 500 children poisoned every year, not necessarily in Berks County, but in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The majority of the children who they are actually labeled with elevated blood lead level poisoning, it, it resides in the city of Rattling itself. And to just give you a magnitude of what it, what does that mean, actually, the samples that were shared with us, or the results that were shared with us, it shows that the elevated blood level, lead level in children's in, in dreading itself are actually three times, three times than it is recorded in Flint, Michigan. Three times more than that itself. So, and, and, and the resolution to this is very simple, as a matter of fact, because it all comes in from lead poisoning. That is basically what it is. It's lead-based paint that the, the children takes the flakes and put them in their mouth, walking on the carpet, and the carpet has, has lead dust on it and, and, and you name it, and it escalates from that point. And unfortunately, that child becomes poisoned with, with lead itself. We've noticed also that the majority of this comes into us, as a matter of fact, from older housings. And the city, as I showed you in an earlier slide, we do have our share of older homes that they are, we still think that they are actually painted with lead and, and, and layers and layers of that. So the lead poisoning is, as a statistics, and this is something that we would like to work with. Lead poisoning in, in, in black children is two times more than Caucasian children. But it's also three and a half times more than Hispanic children. That's a very, very frightening statistics that I would like to share with you. Two times more in black children and three and a half times more in Hispanic children. So we actually, as I mentioned to you earlier this year, probably the latter part of last year, when we got the debriefer from HUD, Alex Mendel, as well as Bill Murray, myself, and Dennis Williams, who, if he's listening, you're the rock, man. I love you to death. And basically, they, we, we, we've got to forgive us. We really need to do something about this, and we need to provide an action plan as quick as possible. And through the action, through, through Alex and, and EPA, we actually had the pleasure of working also with Laura and Deandra from the, it's a very tough day, but it's like the Agency of Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, and we're providing this with world information about how we would be able to do to, to, to bring in more awareness to, and how we can build more relationship with communities, with our communities, hospitals, the Berks County, the Berks Community Health Center, and how we will be able to increase the waters to the level that we can actually increase the blood testing from 19% where currently is to 30%. We are actually, at this point, in the process of applying for the Lead Hazard Reduction Grant that opened a week or so ago. The notice of opportunity of funding through EPA and HUD came last, not last Friday, but Friday before that, and it is due in July 12. And we are actually all geared to, to, to present this. We've learned very well from the debriefing. And as a result of this, we are going to put an action plan with project management as well as as well as a strategy that will help us with it, with how we can abate lead in, in, in housing units itself. Through the process as well, we actually been in contact with the Department of Health, and we requested to participate as a sub-receipient. So we applied for the, for, for the, with the Department of Health. And right now, we are awaiting to receive either a conditional approval or a consent that we can start the process with them. That will be in conjunctions with the HUD program. They will go concurrently together. We verify this information with HUD and the State, the State Department and find out that this is acceptable and worth, and, and we will, we'll be able to do so. So we are actually going to develop both programs, and we are going to have a five-year strategic plan. We, we are hoping that we will be able to engage a school district with us, because we have a very good outstanding relationship with the school districts. And we are hoping to reach to the daycare centers, you know, because they are actually the very first source that will be able to encourage parents to screen their children for, for, for that. I just want to go back to the sample itself, and I would like to say, with lead, with, with lead testing, for, for parents who they have insurance, the test, the, the test is, is free. It does not cost you anything. For, for children that they have a chip program or something similar to that, there is no cost to it. But for those parents who they don't have any insurance, the cost for the lead testing is $15. And we are trying to work through CBPG funds to see if we can qualify for some of the funds to, to fund it in, in that direction. That is our short-term goal. As we move on to the mid, medium-range term itself, one to two years, we are going to continue to foster a good relationship with, with agencies that we will be able to increase awareness about how to screen for blood poisoning and how we will be able to reach a higher level for that. In addition to this, we are going to, and actually, these are requirements for the HUD grant. So whatever I'm going to say to you now is, is a prerequisite for that. So we are going to develop. And we actually started doing so by nominating two employees in the property maintenance department to learn about the, the lead certifications for inspections and how to create a program for contractors to become lead remediation contractors. These programs are actually given to us through EPA. Thank you, Alex and Anuel for providing us with this information. And we are registering right now. And we are about to start with, with the, with the next available one. But we are also reaching out to establish a rehousing program, a temporary housing program. And I would like to tie this with the last call here, and that is to incentivize landlords to help us. You've seen a, a slide earlier where it shows that the ratio between rental units versus owner occupied is, is, is higher. So we will need to reach out to the landlord. And actually, on this regard, the RVOR has reached out to us, and they are offering their assistance. So we are building a bigger and a stronger coalition, and that is one way of tackling this. So our intent here is to, in the, in the very first two years, to actually clean and remediate five to 10 houses. And hopefully, we will be able to, with, with the help of the coalition, will be, will be very successful with that. Most likely, the five to 10 houses will come in under the, the Pennsylvania Housing, the Pennsylvania Department of Health program. So it will be done as a sub-receipient while we are going. In, in, in the long-term plan, we are trying to expand our remediation program to 30 half, to 30 homes per year. And trust me, 30 homes is a lot of homes. I started several sessions where I listened to my colleagues and, and our team players, as well as with this, our sister city of, city of Lancaster. And doing 30 homes a year is, is, is a good task to do so. We'll continue to build the relationship with organizations such as the Berks, BCAHC itself in there. And we will try to expand our level of services with contractors so that we will be able to remediate as many houses as we can. Please start to understand that if we, if we have about 28,000 homes that are built before 1978, and we are building, we are initiating 30 homes, that's a task that will take a very, very long time. That's one of the requirements and the prerequisite that the house must be occupied by, by infant, infants or toddlers. So that will reduce the number of housings, but it will still continue to be so. So in, in closing, I really would like to extend my sincere thanks to the Agency of Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, who are part of the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Laura and Deandra, thank you very much for your efforts. They have been emailing me about changing the presentation to almost like 3:30. So I thank you all heartily. Alex and Anuel, I can't thank you enough for all your effort in that regard itself. You've been a great source and asset for us to enlighten how we can launch a very extensive program. We started a very good relationship with the Department of Health. Unfortunately, I never met Dr. Marshall Ma, but I, I look forward to meeting him in the near future. My sincere appreciation to the National Associations of Advancement of Color People, because they've been very, very active in this role. And they are very concerned about what is happening for our children. Reading, Air War Authority, Bill, you've been a hero, and thank you very much for taking the lead and, and, and showing us how we can develop a very good program. Berks Community Health Center as well, and Berks, our current workforce, developing agencies. To all of you, I'm indebted, and thank you for, for launching with us a very successful program. I turn it now to the panel, who will be more than happy to answer any of your questions if you have or any comments. They will, we, we have a very professional panels here that they will be more than glad to answer your questions. Thank you.
Go ahead, Marcia.
Okay, first of all, thank you for the comprehensive presentation. For myself, having worked in child welfare as beginning part of my profession, I was in regular contact with children that were exposed to lead and helping to work with the families to secure points for remediation and also working with early childhood intervention programs to be able to help those children get the right types of services. So I think the important part is to have a strong coalition that's representing the diversity of our city so that people can be getting the proper information, not be afraid to get the testing, and also not to be able to be fearful that they're going to be dislocated from their housing. So I'd like the temporary housing piece is so important to be there. I was just wondering whether there is anyone represented from the Berks County Office of Early Intervention?
Not with the call, Councilwoman, they are not.
Okay.
Okay.
That would be one suggestion that I would have as far as getting involvement.
Thank you for, for suggesting that. I will reach out to them. Yes.
And also children and youth, because they do interface with a lot of the families when there might be problematic issues. And, you know, we don't want to turn this into an issue of working against the parents. We're working with the parents to help them to protect the health and safety of their children.
Certainly. Thank you.
All right. Additional questions, Donna?
Yes, thank you for this presentation. I thought it was very interesting. Um, my question sort of deals with going back a little bit. In 1980, under Dr. Castle and the Board of Health back then, there was a, a program in the city of Rattling that garnered state attention and state recognition for the for the lead abatement. And again, it was concentrating on children and for the good work it performed. Has anyone taken a look back at the protocols from then and how those, those effective protocols can be translated 40 years later into, into this particular program? That was a very successful one. And if, if we did as well as people say we did then, it's, it's sad to think that we're that far behind Flint and some other areas. So is there, is there any kind of historical reckoning you guys can provide us with?
From my, from my end, Councilwoman, I thank you for pointing out to us the, the study. I will certainly look for that study and try to learn from it and share it with our team so that we can see how we will be able to implement the, the benefits of, of that study itself. With regarding to the statistics, I will, I'll leave that question to, to the team.
Yeah, I can make a comment on that. So when we had our meeting back that February a year ago, we had three members of that coalition there, Donna. And the long and short of it was, it was a real good program, and the money ran out, and that was it. The money went away. That program went away. So as we expand from where we are to where we're going with the program, the need for those people and their experiences are going to become more needy and more appropriate. Right now, you're in the, the formulation stages of trying to, you know, get, get all the horses in the corral and work together and And I I have to just say that in the last year and a half, working with the administration has been nothing but a pleasure. It's a, it's a, you know, one of the the mayor's goals. It's it was Bin Rawa's goal. We had had to start with Dennis and I. And I appreciate the kudos, but the real kudos go to Alex Mandell, who every time Dennis and I were ready to walk away from this, he said, you can't, you got it, you're almost there. And then quite frankly, you know, the new administration came in and Jamal stepped up. And so there'll be a need for all that experience. There is good experience there. That was a very successful, you know, operation. The the other thing I just want to say is, you know, I I read the newspaper and knowing all that I know about the background of this, I read that and I was quite dismayed at some of the things and comments that were made by some of our local representatives. And to 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 make, to compare us to Flint is ridiculous. Although our numbers for lead in paint is definitely a situation that needs to be addressed. It's not something that hasn't been tried to be addressed for a long time. You know, the nineteen eighty program went away because of money.
Do we have, do we have those records from nineteen eighty to know what properties were addressed? Because if the abatement was done in some of those properties, we don't want to see a redundancy if we're looking at properties now. That's what I'm saying. We have those records.
No, and I'm not, I'm not sure, Donna, that it ever got to the actual level where money was being spent on abating properties.
I think it did.
They were being, well, we'll have to find out, but they were definitely.
That's really critical because there's a lot of, there's a lot of, I remember as as a citizen of Reading and as a reporter, the main, all the effort that went into that coverage of.
The the big, the big thing that was brought to our attention at that meeting was the testing. And, you know, when the money dried up, the testing stopped. And then, of course, the statistics are, you know, all over the place. And now I think we have some very accurate, you know, to to bring up the fact that we just did this recent report. In twenty fifteen, there was a similar report and it was, the findings were pretty much exactly the same. So I just want to thank the administration because it's a problem that's existed for a long time, going back, like you said, Donna, that's forty years ago, right? I mean, it doesn't seem it, but as you get older, it's forty years. And to see us back in the game, really making a concentrated effort. And Alex and the other folks, you know, the EPA folks and the and the DEP folks, I tell you, and and I'm sure Jamal can speak to it even better than me. It is a long, arduous task to get this thing up and running in a fashion that we want to be at a very professional level. And we're basically, I would say, I think it's fair to say, we're looking at our our friends, you know, in the South to Lancaster, and they have a very strong lead abatement program. And if we could model them in five or seven years, be like them, we'd all be quite proud of what we're doing. So, I mean, this is just not, this is a marathon, it's not a sprint. And I think we all have to, you know, agree to be in it for the long term, not just for while it's in the news.
Okay, Lucy?
Okay, hi, everybody. Thank you for this presentation. Certainly, we are all concerned. And I have a couple of questions. I won't ask all of them. But I think what really the first one where we just kind of left off, I I heard Bill say this a couple of times, is really it's, the funding is an important component of this. So you have a strong coalition, you're working together. And, you know, how do we, or, you know, kind of where, what is the sustainability on on the funding that you've set up so that, I think I I saw, what was it, phase two or phase three, where you're doing remediation of like thirty plus houses a year? So what what are the thoughts on funding structure continued into the future so that we don't talk about this forty years from now, saying, well, there's a great coalition and we ran out of money? So any thoughts, kind of where where you're thinking about going with with that first?
Yes, I I'll start with with that one. Councilwoman Sally, this is a very good question. And in in the beginning, we are hoping that we will be able to be a sub recipient to the Department of Health. For every for every house we would remediate, we will receive funds for that. And it is about twelve thousand five hundred dollars for remediating a house and about twenty five hundred dollars for healthy, healthy homes, which is a program that supports the 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 remediation itself. But we will also receive about three point four million dollars if awarded. And I'm not going to say if, we're going to say when we are awarded by HUD for for the remediation of the of homes itself. We're trying to look at a sustainable program itself. And that sustainable program will actually be developed based on the capacity of our staff in here and how the revenues are coming in to support a program like that. A very good, a very good example for us to copy from is what the city of Lancaster has done in there because they have been in this program for a quite a long time, as a matter of fact. And they have done a well-recognized, naturally recognized, if I may say, a program. So we are going to copy from them as much as we can. And from my understanding as well is that the fact that you receive the grant, that does not mean that you cannot receive it again. But probably what will happen is that HUD and EPA would look at you and say, what have you done with 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 the with the very first grants? And this is something that's very important for us to understand that it is essential in order for us to succeed with winning this grant, we need to show them that we have the hope, the manpower to implement this program. So among all of these factors in there, we're going to create a sustainable program.
Okay, um, thank you. Second question would be, we, you talked a little bit about Flint, but you also have talked about more than likely the the paint. So it's lead-based paint. So how are we comparing, if if we have those metrics, as to when we're seeing lead in the blood levels of the children? Is it, is it water? Is it a sourcing of of the the water or the paint or both? Or do do we have any of of that information?
Let let me start this by saying, and I didn't mean to to offend my good friend Bill here because the comparison between the lead poisoning and the children in Flint is not meant to be as that the water is contaminated. Actually, the Reading Water Authority and being a board member in there, I can tell that we really take very good pride of what we provide and we have a very good quality water. And we, and Bill talked about the 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 recognitions that Rawa has received in 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 that regard itself. But what we are looking at here is the main, is the lead-based paint. And that is the, that's the one that we are targeting in this one. And unfortunately, when you compare just lead-based paint poisoning between a child in Flint, Michigan, as well as Reading, Pennsylvania, the startling fact is that children in Reading have three times higher lead-based concentration than Flint. Okay, so that's, that's the analogy that we are trying to do. We're not insinuating in any way that the water is is quite, the water is is unacceptable and it lacks good qual, you know, quite, actually, the quality of the water is is a very high standard quality and I drink it every day.
You brought up a good, a good point, Lucine. And we didn't talk about what are the reason we didn't. Quite frankly, is because I think the committee recognizes the bigger problem is on the housing side. But just so everybody understands, we are doing everything we possibly can to locate lead, lead lines, any service lines. We have a program in place. We will already replace any lead service line going into an owner-occupied building or up to a two or three unit, the same thing. We will replace those lines for free to the owner of that property. We are in the process of rolling that out. We have our first candidate. I have a meeting in a couple of weeks with him to make the arrangements. There's a lot of logistics involved with, all of a sudden, Rawa's in somebody's basement helping them replace their lead line. That's something we don't normally do. But we've gone as far as to searched our customer database for words like lead to locate properties that may have had a problem. And now we we pull those out and then we check the services, our records, and see if we can determine. We have found about a half a dozen homes doing that. And all of them have been tested. And quite frankly, the tests come back very, very low or no lead because of the corrosives, the inhibitors that are in our water that protect them from that. So we are, the reason we didn't talk about it is we're full bore on the water side, way out of, way out of the gate. A lot of, a lot of cities aren't even doing that yet. We're, and I anticipate eventually, the two to three unit becomes the five to six unit, you know, et cetera. But I have to go slow because I don't know what to expect around the corner.
Well, Bill, thank you. I I think we need to be as clear as possible for the public, anyone who might be listening, just to make sure that they're assured of the quality of our water and that the discussion is is really focused on on the paint. And really, last is a comment. I'm really happy to hear of more so a multi-pronged approach to what you've described. I think the education is a key component, especially in the workforce, you know, training that you've identified so that, you know, whether it's owner-occupied or a rental unit, if we can address these issues, you know, in a very transient city in which we we live and we have constituents in, they're aware. And then, you know, bringing contractors in, contractors are aware of what techniques or what they need to do. And and I think then we can move towards success on on multiple levels with the coalitions and agencies and partners involved. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, additional questions or comments, anyone? All right. Um, okay, anybody from the the board themselves have any comments?
Alex or Laura, would you like to add some?
I would just love to commend the city and all the partners that you gathered to work on this problem. I mean, you're right, this is an echo of something that, you know, Donna brought that up so eloquently that has been going on for decades. And, you know, it was, it was great to learn from Dr. Kimball about some of the work that was done in the past. But there is still work to do now in the future. And I just really commend you all for coming together and and working on this problem.
Yeah, and I just piggyback off of what Laura said. And thank you, Bill, for the kind words. But the foundation, the core foundation of all of this is is the leadership from you, Dennis, then double ACP, and and obviously Jamal, just an incredible amount of of work. And, you know, the partnerships with ATSDR and many others, it's, 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 it's really rewarding. And I think that we come together to try to utilize all the tools that we have to educate. I think education is a big key word for all of this. Regardless of grants, there is absolutely tremendous amount of opportunity as we work together to educate. Because I think at the very foundation, letting the folks know within the city what they can do to reduce, you know, any kind of potential impact is key. And we'll continue to use our resources together and move forward as a a really great team. So thank you again for the opportunity as well to kind of share our story and looking forward to updating everyone as we move forward together.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. We appreciate the update. It's obviously a very important issue, protecting the citizens of the city. And, you know, Reading's got a rich history. It's also got a lot of stuff in the wall. So it's going to take time. And hopefully, we'll we'll be able to, you know, get through it slowly by slowly. And we don't want the public to panic, but we do want them to be aware. I think that's important. All right, thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time this evening. We're going to move on on our agenda here in City Council to the next item. And that is regarding the Charter Amendment relevant to the council solicitor. I don't know if anyone submitted any questions. I submitted a little bit of a written overview of some of my previous thoughts relevant to this specific referendum question and including some of the Charter Board interpretation. So I'm going to start off with just a little bit of a discussion. And then, again, I'm not a lawyer, though I think I am, I'm not. You know, when I looked at the Charter referendum, and I do not have it in front of me now, it it just simply says that council has the ability to hire a solicitor to advise council on matters. It in no way refers to a solicitor being a new chief advisor to city council. In many respects, city council has always had the ability to go out and kind of hire their own solicitor on an as-needed basis. We've done that before, except previously, we've had sometimes a muddled process because of RFP contentions, if you will. And then I felt that this referendum gave us the ability to either hire a part-time or full-time solicitor, somebody on retainer, or on an as-needed basis without any roadblocks to to hinder us from doing so. I do not see the referendum as a ability for the city council to hire a solicitor that solely represents city council on city matters. I feel that that opens up too many risks, not only for the city, but also for us personally. So I, there was a Charter Board, I think, opinion that said now there were two chief city advisors, and I disagree with that. But the reason I mention that now is because as we slowly embark on discussing what this should look like, how we manage it, we have to figure out if we all agree in that consensus. So I'm going to put Linda on the spot and because she was part of drafting it when it came out of the Charter Review Commission, helping us put it on the agenda. What was your understanding, Linda, of that specific referendum question? And then we'll move on to council members and anyone else.
The way it was explained to us by the solicitor at the time was that the amendment gave council the ability to retain legal counsel, not that legal counsel was to be retained as a city employee.
Okay, so it's kind of similar to my thinking. And again, it removed kind of roadblocks for us to hire councils we needed to. There's certainly value in hiring a solicitor, retaining a solicitor. But as you all know, in city government, there are a variety of issues. And hopefully, there's very little conflicts, but sometimes there's conflicts. But the issues are so varied that to pigeonhole yourself with one attorney in and itself can be risky. And I'm not picking one of the attorney, but even our own city solicitor staff often have to outsource, you know, to selected professionals that specialize in specific areas, attorneys. So I just wanted to point that out. Going to open it up for additional comments so we can at least start this discussion and continue to progress along. Anybody else have comments? Marsha?
Okay, and this is very complex. So I think it's important for us to reach a consensus because I can understand there'll be varying point of views, no matter what we say here. But I think it has to be differentiated so that everyone understands what is city of Reading business and what represents city council issues for legal representation. And I almost would like that spelled out in writing so that we all understand if we're in a session and an issue comes up, city solicitor is representing the city of Reading. The council may have a difference of opinion and that we have a right to be able to use however we decide to do that, whether we retain a solicitor. I somewhat agree with you, Jeff, and as far as I don't think it should be a full-time employee. I know some other folks that have worked on this Charter Amendment have a difference of opinion. But my feeling is it doesn't really help us to be able to have two solicitors representing the same issues. If that makes sense to folks. I think that they need to be able to look at issues that come before council that we may need to have specialized counsel on. And then there will be the issues that represent city, citywide issues. I hope I'm not muddying the water by what I'm saying, but I think this shows you how complex this can be.
Well, no, I I don't think it's, you know, if there's a dispute between administration and everybody goes out and gets counsel and it's battled out in court and that's something that's settled in court, then it is what it is. But at the end of the day, a city solicitor is our chief legal advisor and has to be the one voice for the city on ninety-nine percent of the issues where there is no dispute. If there is a dispute, it may end up in court and come back with whatever that resolution is. And then, of course, a solicitor would use that as a guiding light. You know, the the hope is to limit disputes. But, you know, it's good to have legal, legal opinions to refer to. That, again, that doesn't mean, you know, maybe the, maybe the solicitor could be persuaded, maybe not. But at the end of the day, we have a city solicitor who represents, there's not a separate city of Reading, city council, city administration, there's one city of Reading. And we need to be prepared to honor our solicitor's needs. Doesn't mean we can't challenge things when there's a dispute with the administration. I don't really see it as a big as issue as many people believe. I think Linda summed it up, there's been times in the past where we've needed counsel, we've got counsel. This helps in remove some of the This helps in remove some of the impediments to doing that. Go ahead, Lucine and then Donna.
A couple of comments as I've been thinking through this. I don't see this as a position of conflict. I see this as an opportunity in which an individual would be able to assist council in moving forward on legal matters that, you know, please, and no offense, I know how hard our legal team works with, you know, solicitor latchet, but, you know, they're backed up, right? So and there's areas I know that we have specific, you know, team members from legal that are their expertise and there's specific areas where, you know, let's say like real estate or something. I'm just throwing that out there. You know, where we could reach out, you know, to bring in more help. And I just continually do not go to the place that this potentially is something for conflict resolution. I think this is to enhance and further the ability to move forward and be advised on legal matters of council or pertaining to council. So that's a thought that's been reoccurring for me, which, you know, I want to articulate. And whether that looks like it's, you know, a per DM position, somebody on retainer, I mean, you know, who knows, you know, that we can determine. The second point is, and it may sound really elementary, but I sometimes have struggled with what did the referendum actually give us the ability to do that was different than before? You know, and maybe working through that answer will help us better define what we need to shape reform. Because we had the ability in the past to bring in additional counsel as needed, right? So, you know, maybe this made it easier. Maybe there are less blockages or loopholes, you know, for that. But I'd really like to do a little bit of an analysis on that question alone, you know? What really has this given us the ability towards that we didn't have in the past? Because this isn't, you know, my thought, final thought on that piece of it is this didn't create a solicitor for city council to be used exclusively in contest with, you know, our city solicitor, right? So we've always had that ability to bring in and have advice to us independently or as a body, as far as I understand. So I'd really like to kind of deeper analyze that specifically. And then I think it would be helpful as we move through this process to understand from our law department, you know, the perspectives of, you know, how could this position be used in addition to that they and, you know, how many people they have and where they're focusing their energies. I think that would be insightful for us as we continue to deliberate on this.
Yeah, and yeah, I hope everyone had a chance to look and maybe what we'll do, we'll pull up the referendum question next, but we'll go to Donna and then we'll come back to that.
You know, this is one of the reasons I had asked that we have outside council talk to us about. Because for those of us who have been here for quite a while, several terms, we've seen how the solicitor has been caught between between two masters for it's really not the right word, but two, two bodies, the administration and the council. And we've seen, you know, what has occurred with that, trying to answer, trying to provide legal advice to sides that have different points of view has not only just been costly to the city in terms of money, but it has also been costly in terms of, I think, confidence that that the citizens have in our legal advice and confidence in the bodies and the administrations, and I say this plural, have had in solicitors and acting solicitors over years. We've seen, we've seen that time and time again. I think the referendum, and I'm saying I think because again, I don't know, the referendum, I think, was trying to address that to avoid additional legal issues, to avoid additional costs, things like that. But it failed to say how the organizational chart would be. Would that solicitor or contractual solicitor be reporting to council? Not be a part of the city's legal department? How would that hold? Because if there's a person, an attorney providing legal advice to us and under the organizational chart, he or she reports to the city solicitor, then where does the confidentiality begin and end? You know, there's so much to this. It should seem simple, but it's not. Again, we have seen issues time and time again. I've seen a lot of them since I joined council in 2002. I think of the Antietam issue. That was enormous, enormous. Where an outside solicitor was brought in to work with the city solicitor to represent a segment of the administration and a segment of council. That was extraordinary. And then I can go to Spencer years when there were other issues that came up. There's a reason this was presented. There's a reason this was accepted. But like the city charter itself, it seems too big. We need to have an outside independent objective council advising us to the verbiage of this referendum, how it fits into the city organization and make sure that we aren't in muddy waters moving forward. So, you know, the public has made it clear. They agree that there should be a separate council solicitor. How that functions is something that has to be hammered out. So again, I urge, I urge that we have outside well-versed municipal council advising us on this in terms of both the verbiage and how this is.
Yeah. And I just want to point out that, you know, another attorney is going to be another opinion and that's fine. I mean, we can do that. But what I want everyone to do is make sure they look at the question itself. And I don't know if I have, section 226 of the charter based on the referendum says, "City council shall appoint a council solicitor who shall be a member of the bar of the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania and experience a municipal law, shall serve as a legal advisor to city council. Council solicitor shall perform professional legal services for city council. The primary responsibility positions is to advise city council on questions of law." And that's pretty much the thrust of his responsibility. You know, so it's pretty open-ended, but nowhere does it replace, you know, section 801 of the charter that says, you know, the city solicitor is the chief legal advisor. We can get an outside attorney to tell us that. I don't think there's anything verbatim that says it has to be a full-time, part-time or just a retained attorney. So I think a lot of it is up to the body on really where we want it to be. Doesn't mean you can't have an outside representative tell you he thinks it's this way or that way. The other piece is, I think if it's a city council solicitor, of course, it would report directly to city council. Probably wouldn't be a full or part-time employee, would probably be a retained solicitor or firm to use as needed. Those are my, that's just my opinion. If you want to get a legal opinion, again, you get 900 legal opinions, you get 900 slightly different answers. So, you know, there's risks in that, but if there's value in it, then sure. Marcia, go ahead.
And take this in the manner it's meant, Jeff, but you could ask eight different counselors and get eight different opinions too. So that I concur with Donna at this point. I think this is an opportunity. We need to do it right. And yes, there may be different legal opinions, but at least give us some clear direction so that when other counselors move on and they wonder why decisions were made, we can reference back that in order to enact this ordinance, we
Well, that's right. You could
obtain the services of an outside council. Yeah, again, I just really think that it makes it clear because the more I talk about it, the more muddy it gets. So that there is between all of us, there's probably different opinions about the way this should be enacted. Probably a different opinion from the city solicitor. I would rather just have that voice and, you know, we'll see how other people weigh in on it.
Well, yeah, that's fine. I just think we had to be clear on what questions we're asking. To me, the first question is, does everyone agree that this is supposed to be an advisory solicitor as a city council, not to replace the role of chief legal advisor of the city solicitor? If seven members don't, if four members don't agree to that, well, then there's a long-winded problem. The rest of it, I think, is pretty basic that we could get through. The what, the how, the who. To me, the bigger question is, do you believe as individuals? Because the charter board made a ruling that believes that no, there's two legal advisors now, chief legal advisors to the city. And I completely disagree with it. And so if the question that you guys want to answer is get another lawyer to tell us he disagrees with that or agrees with it, we can go down that road. Because to me, that's the most paramount question. The rest of this stuff, we can certainly use some legal guidance with. There's no, there's no denying that. I've never said we shouldn't. But that question, that, and I'm going to forward everyone right now, that email from that contains that opinion from the charter board. And I had sent an email out last week relevant to my comments and I'll send it again, relevant to that opinion from back on March 28th. I took an hour and a half to write up my thoughts on it, which, again, I'm not an attorney, so. But, but I thought there were some pretty compelling, you know, arguments to their ruling. So why don't we do this between now and we have this on the agenda for next Monday night, right?
Correct.
I'm going to ask everyone to review the document and my comments. And I'm just going to take a poll next week on that question. And regardless of the outcome of that poll, we'll ask anyone who feels there's a suggested attorney that we would like to bring into this or Linda to make reference. And then we'll have that list in front of us too for next week. Is that fair? Because this is going to take a couple discussions and I'm not opposed again to having some outside opinion. But I really think that we need to look at this closely as individual council members. Look at the ruling, look at the referendum, look at the charter. And I want you to come up with your own opinion on that before we go outside and ask for an opinion on that specific question. Otherwise, when we do go to hire an attorney, I want to make sure we have a list of specific questions we feel we need answered. All right. So the exercise between now and next Monday night is to read that opinion, come up to your own conclusion. You can see my comments. You can smack them down as much as you want. I won't be offended. And then B, list out additional questions we think an outside attorney could help us get through. I think that's a fair request for me so that we're prepared not just to hire an attorney, but to know what we need answers for. Go ahead, Lucine.
So in addition, I would like to see resources provided to us. For example, we know that there's a model of this that already exists in our Commonwealth, right? So making sure that all of us are versed on that and possibly inviting someone from that municipality to, you know, meet with us, speak with us, you know, answer questions that we might have as to their model, right? And other agencies or resources that might be able to provide other guidance or structure for us. So I don't know if those resources could be provided with a combo of the law department and Linda, you know, or other members of the administration, if managing director, you know, might know of some directions there too. I'd appreciate that. So it's not just, and no offense to anyone who's a lawyer, but it's not just lawyers advising us on what we should be doing here. I mean, of course, it's critical and we need that advice, but there are some other perspectives that we need to consider, I think, that we should consider as we move forward.
The duties of the Bethlehem city council solicitor are attached to the agenda. I'm screen sharing them right now.
Yeah, and I want to be
And that is pretty much soup to nuts, what they do.
Yeah, I want to be a little careful with those before we dive too deeply into those. I think, Linda, subsequently, I would like to know, did they approve this via a referendum question? Or was this part of their initial charter?
No, they're not a, they're not a home role community. They're still under the commission form of government.
Okay, so that's one difference. And secondly, was this part of their initial commissioning document or was this something that was supplementally added?
This started around 1998.
But was it part of their initial commission document?
No, not their initial commission document.
But how did this get approved for a city council solicitor in Bethlehem? A referendum?
No.
How did it get added on then?
See if he has that.
If you could find that out. I just want to be careful.
Okay.
Though, you know, we decipher our referendum question into what we feel this should be. I think that's a good example when we get to kind of level three, like what should the roles be? What's the policy? What's the step? Who do they report to? They report to the body, et cetera, et cetera. So it's good for people to look at, but I think we have to make sure that we compare our referendum question to our charter and to what we feel they should fit into. I don't want to muddle this yet. We can do that maybe the next step. Right now, I want everyone to read the charter commission's opinion, which includes in there the referendum question and refer to the charter as well. Look at my comments and come up to your own conclusion before next Monday. And then also on top of that, identify, this is very important, any questions you think we should pose to an outside attorney? Is that fair? I'm just trying to put some steps to this, guys. That's all. Okay, we'll do that. And then Donna, we'll work on a list of attorneys in the meantime, Linda, okay?
Yep.
All right. I just want to keep it going. So that's good. And I don't want to get too far ahead of it because Johani's not here tonight to hear this piece. So I'm going to have to try to update her. Okay, any other comments on that for now? All right. Update on the skateboard park. Do you know I'm a skateboard champion? Did you know that?
We did not.
We'll do it. Get on a skateboard. But go ahead, Lucine, who's updating us on the skateboard park?
I think Frank will be. Yes. Hi, Frank.
Council president, I apologize. You might not have been copied on the email. We've asked if we can reschedule it. I believe Linda said to possibility of the 21st. We're still waiting for some key information and we felt was premature to do a half a presentation. We're still waiting for some engineering information on construction.
All right. Well, while, but at least while we have it on the agenda, does somebody want to give us a kind of a two-minute recap of the status? And we'll get into the more details later on, just because I know a lot of kids in the public are probably waiting to hear, or is that not a good idea at this point?
Um, the only thing is I would, I would, I would not try to like have a half a conversation on it because I would be able to start something I couldn't finish completely this evening. It's just some details that timeline of the construction and some of those things, which are probably crucial for the conversation. I don't want to leave people hanging with unanswered questions tonight, if that's possible.
No, makes sense. All right. I see we have something listed for executive session. I'm not sure what that specific issue is, Linda?
It's just an overall litigation update.
That update. Okay. So before we go into a executive session, let's, excuse me, let's open the floor to either council or the administration for any issues they feel we need to discuss in public before we go into an executive session. Go ahead, Donna.
Yes, well, I appreciate that we're going to have a briefing about the Reading Phils. I'm still concerned about the length of time. It's almost another full month. We could have that occur. And the fact that others have been briefed and we have not, it's, as I said in the email, it's very dismaying to me that, you know, I'm gleaning my information primarily from the news media and from what other, from what elected officials have posted on Facebook, which I'm not quite sure that's how it should occur when we're looking at possibly $15 million that is being discussed and the kinds of improvements that are being discussed. And what percentage is going to be state money, what percentage is like federal money? What's being looked at from the city, what the agreements, you know, that are already in place, the lease agreements with the R Phils? You know, this is a fairly important, very important matter as far as I'm concerned, certainly as the district representative for that area. And I am, you know, concerned that I've spoken with state legislators who have said to me they were surprised we were not fully informed and also have offered to try to set up individual meetings with the R Phils, which I've not accepted because I thought all council together should be informed, even though I am the representative for that area. Another month, I think, is two. I'm sorry. I appreciate the effort, but this is now something that everyone is concerned about, concerned that there could be a change in the team staying here. And I think anything we can do to reaffirm to people that we will work as hard as we can to keep up the team in the stadium in good stead and try to work with them. In good stead and try to work with, you know, the requirements.
Yeah, just a brief update before you go, Marcia. I spoke with the mayor no less than, oh, an hour ago and a little over an hour ago and, you know, he assured me that. They had limited details up until this point. It's incumbent now on the Reading Phillies to come and meet with the city administration and city council with specific details. We appreciate the efforts of state representatives to get funding, but at the end of the day, we'll we'll negotiate this out with the Reading Phillies. We have some resources where we can access some resources that can help them. And the Reading Phillies and Major League Baseball have a ton of resources as well. So we look forward to working with them closely. In the coming weeks and months to get this resolved. I have no doubt in my mind that we'll be able to do that. I don't know how this got out ahead of things, but you know, they're they're busy getting ready for baseball season and I guess things kind of came out sideways. But the focus is now going to be directly with the city. I know the mayor's assured me that will happen. Abe did make the effort to try to get this meeting set as soon as possible. The goal was two weeks out from tonight, but. The the Reading Phillies were unavailable, but it's a priority for them as they've made that clear. It's certainly a priority for the city. And we will, as a city, together lead the way to work this out with the Reading Phillies and we'll reach out to. You know, our representatives where we need them, whether it's at state or federal or county level. To get the appropriate assistance. Marcia.
Yeah, and I just wanted to be able to say I don't think it was purposeful how this happened. I believe the. Fighting Phils organization took the lead in their outreach. And so I thank Council Reed for not meeting with them individually because that's following the proper protocol. But I also find interesting that we got a copy of the minutes from the Stadium Commission. The March meeting and indeed, we have a counselor that's represented on that meeting. So to say the council wasn't informed is not completely correct. And the fact that it was never reported back to us. Through our own body and our own representative that the issue was discussed. As far as it being put out to the to the Stadium Commission, what some of the issues were. That the Fighting Phils were going to need to look at. So I would suggest that we recirculate it and that we just read that carefully because indeed. The information was provided and we could have probably started asking questions. I don't know whether. Well, those meetings are posted, am I correct, Linda, on the city website?
Yes.
So that that was available. So it's not like it isn't actually news. It's back in March that that was. Initially discussed. So I think the the timing and the way this process handled wasn't great, but let's regroup and see how we can move forward with it. And there are a lot of outstanding legal issues for sure as as and funding issues.
Yeah, and I want to be clear to everybody, though the Reading Phillies made some reference to it, there has been not. There has not been a specific detailed. Request and overview of what is needed on a one to three year basis, three to five year basis, five to ten year basis. I mean, the city of Reading and all the entities that we're tied to need to fully understand what the need is, where it's going. How much the Reading Phillies and Major League Baseball can contribute to the whole process. I mean, this is a very, very detailed. Discussion and until those details are presented to the city of Reading. Really, it's just been mentioning the the fact that there's a need. I think once we get the substantive details. And can ask the questions and understand what other communities and ball clubs are doing throughout the country. At that point, we'll have a better understanding of what the real need is. So I think they made reference to it. To your point, Marcia probably didn't come out the way they wanted it to, or maybe they just thought they'd mention it in the meantime, but. Now's the time for the the parties who are truly involved to sit down and get it resolved. So I think I'm I'm confident.
Jeff, we're going into budget season soon. This is this is can't be goofing around with.
Well, everything can, everything can go around budget season. Well, I don't think this will take.
It has to be a consideration.
It's a consideration, but we'll be able to manage it. I don't think this is going to be. A complicated thing. It'll take a good hour or two to understand the need and ask the questions we need to ask. And from there, we'll turn it over to the administration to drive home some resources with the Phillies and Major League Baseball. And make sure that the the Reading Phillies can carry forward for the next forty years. God willing. I mean, I don't know what Major League Baseball's plans are, but. You know, we need to understand their plans before we can. Just rebuild our stadium. I mean, that's an important, there's due diligence that we need to do as well. So. And we did, we say that in a supportive manner and I'm sure they understand that. All right, anything else for public discussion before we go into? Go ahead, Lucie.
So two things. One, there was a pretty significant accident. At one of the intersections that has been placed on the dangerous intersections. List and that was this weekend on Museum Road. It's a, depending on how you look at it, five, six point feeder intersection. And there were multiple people involved, some young people involved. And, you know, I'd like to know the progress of, you know, us sharing these intersections and. You know, what are the next steps? Because I I want to try to be working towards starting to create a safe environment in which. These these accidents are not continuing to happen and and that's the talking point. So I I don't know where that this lies. I know that we've gathered that information and presented it. I know Linda has submitted it. What are the next steps that we can take to continue to move this forward?
I have that on the agenda for next Monday.
Great.
I was gonna say, I thought I saw that on the list. Yeah, so good.
Okay, and is that still in a council conversation or is, will the administration also be involved in in discussing that on the agenda?
It can be both.
Okay, well, I guess Jeff, you and I can talk about it a little bit more and.
Yeah, we can.
Reach out to the administration so that they're prepared and, you know, they're being invited to discuss, you know, or report on where where they are. They they know it's coming to.
Well, I think the important thing is that we all, meeting council and administration, look at the list and then figure out where we can and can't make any changes. We have rather limited. Roads that we control, at least the major ones, but let's start the discussion. I think it's a good point, Lucie, and it's important, anything we can do to help save lives. And there's always room for improvement, right? So I think I I able to agree with me. I don't think the administration is opposed to us. Discussing these intersections with council and seeing where and what we can do. So I like the concept. I'm glad. For next week, I'm sorry to hear about the recent accident. Where did you say that was, by the way?
It's the intersection of Museum Road, Old Wyman Singh Boulevard. Barberry. I'm trying to think of the other feeders.
Wide intersection.
Yeah, and you know, it's just a precursor to the fact that the, you know, weather is changing. People are out driving more as a pastime. You know, enjoyably, some people are, you know, becoming more reckless, unfortunately, and it's tied to some of the biking and ATVs and. Illegal street, you know, so all of this is connected. It's not just one intersection in one part of the city or one issue. You know, I think this feeds into a lot of of issues that 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 we're working on. So yes, I think it'll be a good discussion and I want everybody to participate in in this. For for next week then. Great. The second point kind of leads into that in that July fourth is not far away. So I'd like to know where we are in terms of our approach. I know we've talked about, you know. Not only encouraging our legislators to actively be working towards undoing what they've done, but also. You know, we've talked about public service announcements, safety announcements. You know, it's not too soon to be talking about this now in June because July fourth is right around the corner. And the more we can say and emphasize that it is not legal. That people should not be purchasing them. They should not be preparing to ignite them or have parties anywhere. Within the parameters of how the law is written. We we can't say that enough, I think. So I'd just like to know the status of of what our approach is. To be informing our citizens and constituents that they should not be building their arsenals right now, right? Because there's going to be some significant consequences for public safety and health and beyond.
Yeah, I I think that's a good point, Lucie. And, you know, I actually talked to the mayor today about after July fourth reconnecting with the state quietly and nothing formal at this point, but. He is committed to doing that with me, but I think your point is right. And it may be, maybe the city could spend a few dollars on a public campaign to say, look, it's illegal. To light fireworks in the city. B, it's a three hundred dollar fine if we catch you. Last year, we've issued, I don't know how many hundred citations. If you would mind reviewing that with the mayor and the chief. I mean, even I think council would even support moving some funds if it was necessary. To do that. I think it's a good idea at least to let people know because. Up until now, that's a free for all. And I've already had some calls from. One or two friends who were worried because they're already hearing the fireworks. And again, I'm not blaming the city. I mean, this this state law that allows people. To buy fireworks in the state of Pennsylvania is just a complete disaster. The fact that it wasn't repealed by the end of July last year. Just absolutely befuddles me. I'm wondering what these people do. I mean, Jesus Lord, it it's like you can't, I I think of the senior citizens, the pets. And the children, the young children who are petrified, many of them, of these fireworks. So. To your point that we can't change the state law, but we can at least put the word out there, I think it's a good idea. Abe and, you know, you might want to talk to the water authority and they're billing a flyer and insert there as well. Maybe even a BCTV campaign. That'd be nice to see if somebody could head that up. I'm sure even a council member would volunteer to some degree to assist you guys. Marcia?
Yeah, and to many of the points, first of all, I think people are already armed with the fireworks. I don't think we need to wait. They've probably already. Purchased their supplies. I can tell you that I have very vibrant displays outside my. Back porch every night, high fireworks that are probably close to professional grade. So and it does indeed. It causes my dog to go hysterical. I've also had to intervene politely with children on the playground. So young kids do like that excitement of setting them off. And, you know, I basically tell them, you have a choice. You either throw these away. Leave the playground or I will need to be able to call the police. And, you know, we have debates back and forth and I said, you make your choice. I do think, and I hate to keep putting the police in this position, but they have been doing an excellent job of responding when they're able to. Depends on what else is going on in the city. I also did note that the colored. Board on Penn Street Bridge did have a large sign on it to be able to talk about fireworks being illegal. So that was one way of getting at the message. But I think something needs to be done more comprehensively. Certainly, you have the model now for the flyer. I I've also seen the flyer. They've been handed out at community cleanups. So there is some effort being done by the administration, but what I feel is the people that need the information probably aren't going to go to those places to get them. So I suggest a way that we try to get it out to as many people as possible. Through all the neighborhoods, however that might be. I know people hate the robocalls. We may need to go that way. But it's important that we know that this isn't going to go away until the laws change at the state level. And that people can't get access to them because availability, limited availability is the key to really preventing them from being used. So I don't know any other practical suggestions that come. It's really sometimes very, how can I say, very scary when you're seeing people do this and you don't know quite what they're going to do with the fireworks. That they may tend to use them as projectiles at people's homes or cars. I've seen that happen. How do we intervene while we're waiting for the police to. Come to the scene if they're able to?
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
Jeff?
Donna, Linda, Donna.
Frank and I serve on the Pennsylvania Municipal League Legislative Committee. And I can tell you that the state legislature has currently introduced legislation that would allow municipalities only to opt out of fire sales.
Yeah, well, let's not even bring that up. You're trying to get me thrown off of Zoom. That's what's going to happen. Yeah, it's a it's a disgrace, but. I'll say it again, it's nothing short of stupid. I'm sorry, stupid. And. I've had a chance to speak with some of the top state legislators before, and I'm going to speak to them again, and I'm going to use the exact same words. This thing should have been repealed by the end of July last year. For six million dollars, whatever the revenue is, if if they can't figure that, they're traumatizing kids, pets, senior citizens. They're turning our police and firemen into babysitters. And unfortunately, I I hope it doesn't happen. One of them are going to get hurt one of these times and it's just. A stupid, stupid decision by the state legislators, you know, maybe this works in Montana, not Pennsylvania. There's too many urban areas. There's too much, you know, concentration of people and. You you can't have the sale of fireworks and believe there's a way to control them. There just isn't. And. They want to argue with me on that, they would, they have my number and they can reach me through Linda. All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I think Strat had some comments.
Go ahead, sir.
I was going to hold off until with the executive session, but since we're bringing up so many things concerning the city itself. I called Linda last night and. Told her what's been going on up in our area here. Now, I'm referring not, since we are talking about the lead. I'm referring to a group of people that are going door to door. Up in our area here, asking if we have any problems with the water, with contamination from the water. Now, they did mention in the earlier about. You know, through the lead piping and everything. They could be having a problem in when in their systems. I and I I questioned this guy, I mean, this is a party. Did they get a permit to go door to door knocking on doors and asking them this? And they sort of backed off and down off the porch they went. I think the city ought to know about this. Because we don't want to end up in any litigations. From a group like this filing any kind of suits against us. Thank you.
Strat, that's true, but we don't want to be an impediment to people to doing their, you know, their legal research and their abilities, you know, they have their right.
This was a company that's doing it.
Well, they have the right. I mean, unless they're threatening or misleading anybody, then that's a different story. But if they're honest about what they're trying to find out or asking people questions, as long as they're not harassing people. Like if you tell them to get off your porch and they refuse to leave, that's a different story. But, you know, we have to be careful because we have to protect the rights of citizens and even private companies. But it's a good point. I'm glad you brought it up. It's good that the city is aware of it. All right, are there any other comments? Donna?
Yeah, and this is, this is somewhat general and somewhat broad, but it it came up as I was walking on. With folks for the cleanup in the Bear Park, Lynn Street, as as a Brad Street area on on Saturday morning. I was getting a lot of comments about the frustration of people feeling and I and I've also got some some on. Some texts from folks in Lower Glen Side, which is of course the other side of the bridge. About where we are as a city in terms of. Our enforcement on quality of life issues. There is a a general feeling and I'm saying this ad hoc totally. But I believe it's true that people feel that there are no teeth in our quality of life. Ticketing, enforcement. You know, everything from from noise to somebody going like this to me and saying, look at that road disintegrating garages. Is that safe? What's being done? The kids are in there playing and these things would collapse. To to, of course, the noise issues. And of course, now, and we talk about fireworks and the summer issues, but. I've had today two particular concerns about about outdoor pools that are being placed that are. Not within fenced areas that children can easily get into and drown if they're not, you know, if they're not being watched. Just walk from the RTR and this is in a suburban area where I live, but I know it also happens within the more densely populated, bro home, the semi detached areas. So I guess, you know, there there's a feeling and and I know the administration has talked about about, you know, really. Really going all out to enforce the noise ordinances, go to another parts of the city and quality of life issues, but there is a feeling out there. As much as people are grateful to see people going around picking up pieces of litter here and there and the trash along the river. The feeling is there that there's malaise, that quality of life really doesn't matter. And that they're just struggling to maintain some kind of patience and calmness. With life in the city. And that's really disheartening. It hurts, you know, it hurts me as a city representative to hear that. But yeah, when they point things out in front of me and my eyes are seeing it. It's disconcerting. So perhaps there's something we can schedule for a committee of the whole where we can have a report back on how many quality of life. where we can have a report back on how many quality of life, quality of life citations are going out in our, in our councilmatic districts. We used to have those reports pretty much on a monthly basis some years back, which have been forgiven or which have not been found guilty in, in the courts for particular problem properties, what is the log of complaints, and why do they continue? I, I can think of that, that garage on West Windsor Street that has been nothing but a problem, I know there are eyes on it. We'll have the issues, but how can we get as council some assurances that through statistics and also through, through legal means, that quality of life will not only be enforced, but that we can strengthen our ordinances so that people can live peacefully in the city of, it's, it's really a critical problem.
All right, well, let Abe respond, but I, I think it's a fair request, and often there's more going on than we realize, so we'll, 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 I think it's fair to ask for information, and we'll see what Abe thinks about that.
Certainly, it's always fair to ask for information, and we are happy to accommodate any requests that any council member may have, and I think we've made that abundantly clear, especially during the last several months. So I just want to make it clear that we have put our backs into this, we have examined existing ordinances, and we have found that the question is in enforcement, and until we have more resources at the street level to really dedicate to these quality of life issues, we're going to continue talking to residents and letting them know how important these issues are, these matters are, we're taking them very seriously. We have, we have done quite a bit of enforcement in the last several weeks, and you're always going to have individuals who are never going to be happy with the efforts. That's just part of public service, I can accept that, I think many of us can accept that as well. But what I, what I really want to stress is that we all have a responsibility to be part of the solution. And so letting people know what we're doing, I think, is a good first step. And secondly, just know that we are taking these matters seriously, and I think that the media reports have lent themselves to that, we've made ourselves accessible to talk about these issues. We've had members of the public say quite the opposite, that they are pleased with the progress that we've made on certain things. And you're not always going to please everyone a hundred percent of the time, and again, it's just the nature of public service. So we remain optimistic that we're doing the right things right now, and until we have more resources available to us in terms of personnel and shifts and overtime, then we're not going to be able to put the dent that some people want. And again, I appreciate the feedback, and of course, of course, we'll have a committee of the whole presentation to, to give you updates.
Can we get those data reports that we used to get, that's really helpful for all of us to know how, how.
Yeah, let me just, as a follow-up, if I may, just when, when were these data reports submitted to council? How far back does that go, was that the previous administration, two administrations ago?
You want Abe or two, yeah, maybe, if you can look one up and just see.
It might have been, it's, it stopped during the Scott administration, but we were getting them by district, which showed the kinds of citations, were they property, were they high weeds, were they noise, whatever? And, and I know what you're saying, Abe, and I do believe people, there are some areas that are certainly looking better. I can think of the 600 block of Toba Hocken Street that looks good, but I can tell you behind it, Eisenhower and Clinton, it's abominable in the hours there, and it's abominable to see, to see, you know, the roofs of garages like this that children are running in and out of, and why that, why they're not, you know? I mean, this is something obviously that went back, and we can all see them in our districts, went back to the years well before the Moran administration. Lower Glenside, which is fairly strong area, I mean, people are registered to walk because of, of issues down there, and that's a real nice, strong, mixed area where businesses interact with homes, and these are the folks we don't want to lose. People have been here thirty, forty years, who've just, to the point of no return.
If someone would be kind enough to provide me what was submitted in the past, we will, we'll be glad to examine, glad to take a look at it.
I'll ask Linda to see if she can find something, if not, Linda, let me know, I'm, I may have a digital copy somewhere.
Okay, I have some in my file.
Figure out where, I'm just, that's the problem. All right, anything else for public comment, Marcia?
I was, I feel compelled to put this forward as an idea. I sent an email to the mayor and to the managing director, and it's regarding fireworks. I did some exploration and found out that other states have, the same way we did a gun take-back, they have firework take-back events before the Fourth of July, where they encourage people to return all their fireworks. I know it's hard to plan for that so soon this year, but it certainly seems to me that we just don't want to say after July 4th, everything's going to go away. So I would just put that out for consideration to talk it through. It's been a proven remedy, together with firearms, fireworks can be just as dangerous. I think we've talked about the things that can happen, so just putting that out there for thought and discussion.
All right, is there any other need for public discussion this evening? All right, if not, Linda, will you clear the room and turn off the recording and let me know when we're ready for the executive session, please?